Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting, please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Once again, welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting. We meet the second Wednesday of each month here at Village Hall. Our next meeting will be in April, April 12th, and I'll introduce the board to you. We have a full board this evening. To your far right is Mr. Michael Wozniak. There was Mr. Ed Davis. He's in the back now. And then we have Rachel Bruce, Mr. Craig Brady. I'm Karen Ungerer. This is our counsel, Kelly Naughton, and our recording secretary is in the rear there, Jessica McLennan. Okay, we're on the agenda now. We have no executive session. Has everyone read the minutes from February 8? Do I have a motion? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no new business. We have some action on decisions. The first one is ACTUS, Unit 3B Review Decision for the Construction of an Addition to an Existing Single Family Dwelling, Number 3B, whereas pursuant to Section 310-43.2(c), nonconforming uses may be expanded by up to 10% of the floor area of the principal structure, subject to a special permit and certain findings of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Said property is located in the R3A zoning district along Scunnamunk Road in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 213, Block 1, Lot 1.11. And after several pages of facts and findings, the decision is as follows. As a consequence of the board's discussion, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the applicant's request for a special permit to enlarge the nonconforming use of land as a seasonal dwelling as stated and described herein, subject to the conditions set forth above. Do I have a motion to accept this decision?
Motion.
And do I have a second? Who seconded that?
Second.
Okay. Craig, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael, do you want to vote on this? Okay, that's fine. Oh, and I'm in favor also. Next action on decision is Wellner Review Decision for the Construction of a 10 by 16 storage shed in the front yard, whereas pursuant to Section 310-11, accessory buildings may be permitted only in the rear yard. And whereas pursuant to Section 310-12(c)(3), any required yard shall be open space and entirely free of buildings other than a detached accessory building occupying not more than 25% of a required yard and setback from any lot line one-half the height of such accessory building, but in no case less than six feet. Said property is located in the R Quarter Acre zoning district along Park Avenue in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 220, Block 3, Lot 24. And once again, after several pages of facts and findings, the decision is as follows. As a consequence of the board's discussion, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested area variance described and discussed above to the extent noted above conditioned upon the applicant receiving all necessary permits from the Building Department, and hereby finds that the variance as granted is the minimum variance necessary to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood. Per Section A316-9 of the Village Code, this decision shall expire if a building permit is not obtained by the applicant within 180 days from the date of this decision. The board may extend this time for one additional period of 90 days if such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances. Do I have a motion to?
I'll make that motion.
And?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Craig, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael, you want to vote on this? Okay, thanks. And I vote aye. So Mr. Wellner gets his shed. Okay, next on the decision, on the agenda, we have public hearings. The first one is for Simka, 2 First Avenue. Continuation of a public hearing requesting a variance for modifications to an existing seasonal single-family dwelling, including the construction of a second-story addition and the conversion of the dwelling to year-round use with less than the required acreage, which does not meet the front, side, or rear yard setbacks. Whereas pursuant to Section 310-26, the lot must meet the development standards provided for a single-family dwelling permitted in the district. And whereas pursuant to Section 310-43.2, nonconforming buildings may be remodeled or reconstructed, provided that such action does not create any new noncompliance or increase in the degree of noncompliance. Said property is in the R2A zoning district on the corner of First Avenue and Scunnamunk Road in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 214, Block 6, Lot 5. Is the applicant present? Would you go to the podium, state your name, even though we know?
Hi, good evening. My name is Larry Hartman from Hartman Design. I'm representing my client, the owner of 2 First Avenue. We had a meeting, I believe that was two weeks ago, where we opened the public hearing. At that time, a request was asked for the total calculation of the water usage to see if this falls in under the moratorium, which we did provide since then.
Yes, thank you. We all received it. Everybody received that? Okay. I think the big question now is what we asked at the last meeting. Is this going to be demolished or just built up from the existing foundation? I know you said there was a difference of opinion between the owner and yourself.
Yeah, I guess it is going to stay the way, the foundation is going to stay, and we're going to be built up on top of that, the same.
So you're going to use the existing first floor?
Yes.
And just remodel, you know, inside, fix it up?
Yeah.
And add the second story?
Correct.
According to the plans that you submitted?
Yeah.
Okay. So those variances that we need. The lot, the lot area, you need 15,000 square feet. You have 9,700. These are rounded off.
Yeah, these are all existing.
Yes, yes, they're all pre-existing, nonconforming.
That was before the zoning was changed into an R2A. This area was changed after the, I believe, when the art was, became an R2A, but that's why although the lot is much smaller, the whole area, the entire area.
I don't need to read all the setbacks requirements, do I? No, I got you. Okay. So where does the board want to start? Or do you have any questions before we discuss? Anything? All right. Sure.
I just have one question. I don't think I was clear. So you're going to, are you using the existing foundation? Are you tearing out the first floor? Or are you, are you just using the foundation and building a new first and second?
The move, we're definitely going to remove the floor, which means because the floor is going to be in a different level where there is right now. But we're moving the floor, but which means from the area where the floor is right now is going to be removed. So partial of the wall is going to stay, the other half is going to be removed. We're not going to keep the whole shell, just the portion below the floor.
So just the foundation that's in the ground?
Foundation, yeah.
Okay. He's demoing it. I think you should probably treat it as the new memo in that respect.
All righty. So you're just building from the foundation up?
That is correct.
Okay. We did receive the projected water use. It's unsigned. Does that make any difference?
No, he provided it. The bedroom count is not changing. However, it'll become a Building Department issue because if the room has a closet, it's considered a bedroom under the building code, so he will deal with that. This board is able to proceed and is not stopped by the moratorium.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. So we have the plans. Does the board have any questions before we open this to the public?
So what specific variances do we need yet?
Okay, we need, the lot area that's needed is 15,000 square feet. He has 9,700. The lot width is not needed. The front yard, this is a corner property, so there's two front yards, one on Scunnamunk and one on First Avenue. The First Avenue front yard needs 40 feet. He has 33. The Scunnamunk front yard needs 40, and he has about 33 also.
So it's essentially everything here on the?
Pretty much, except the lot width. Is that any question? You want me to run through it? Side yard?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Hartman, you have anything you want to add before I open it up to the public?
Just a note that front, that we, most of the areas, variances we're requesting is existing, for example.
Yes, yes. No, no, we understand that.
We're not changing the footprint of the existing building. We're just going up.
Except for the decks?
Except for the decks.
Yeah.
And the back, the mechanic room, which has, is now shed and has become part of the mechanic room.
Right, that little piece in the back, yeah. Okay. Somebody ask you of any? Do I have a motion to open this up to the public? Second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Hello? Okay, is there anyone in the first row who wishes to speak to this application? Third row? Fourth row? Fifth row? Anyone in the room that I missed? Okay, do, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on this?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So after this meeting, Mr. Hartman, we will deliberate. You're welcome to stay, or you can call the Building Department in the morning.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for Number 50 Smithcove LLC. Continuation of public hearing for the conversion of an existing laundromat to residential apartments. Whereas pursuant to Sections 310-6F and 310-7, the proposed conversion requires 22,000 square feet of lot area, where 11,753.3 square feet are provided. And whereas pursuant to Sections 310-6 and 310-42A, 10 parking spaces are required for both uses, where 6 are provided. We'll adjust that. And whereas pursuant to Section 310-40, no off-street parking shall be permitted within a required front yard in any district, and parking is proposed within the front yard. And whereas pursuant to Section 310-42e2, for parking areas with 10 spaces or fewer, driveways are required to be 10 feet wide per lane, and whereas a total of 10.8 feet is provided. Said property is located in the HB zoning district along Smithcove Road in Central Valley, is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 231, Block 3, Lot 3. Is the applicant present?
Hello, everyone.
Yeah, please state your names.
David Nimatko, we're the design firm that's representing the project and that prepared the plan and the application. So, well, we received Kelly's email outlining the variances. You know, we definitely agreed with it, as we stated in a reply email. In addition to that, we did remove the two parking spaces that were located toward northeast of the property after the discussion last time that established how many parking spaces would be needed. We'd like to just remind the board that the lot area is a pre-existing, nonconforming condition. The area of the front parking space that's in the front setback is a pre-existing condition, you know, because that area does exist, or did exist for the laundromat for parking. And we would consider the board's review and consideration of the parking lanes. It is just six parking spaces. Since the two were removed, that one criterion doesn't exist anymore.
Right, that's what I meant by clarifying that.
Yes, we're not continuing the driveway or the drive access to that back area. As was stated at the last meeting, there is a lot of off-site parking near the municipal parking that is near the site. We do believe that apartments are conducive to this area. There's a lot of sidewalks, easy access, easy pedestrian access to different shops within the area. Just seems to be a natural fit to have a residential application there instead of the laundromat. It also reduces the water demand and that's, was established with the laundromat, and now with the apartments, of course, that would be reduced. So appreciate the board's consideration of the application.
I have a couple of questions.
I would have.
The, the building, which is the one, single-family house where the parking is next to that, correct? And you're proposing six spaces. So my first question is, you said that the, that sixth space, or actually the first space, already encroaches on that right-of-way there. Does that cover the sidewalk, or is that just, is that right-of-way partway into the driveway, so to speak? Or is it going to be over on the driveway, on the sidewalk? Yeah, right. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. So it's not, it's not?
No.
Okay. Now, the dumpster today, when I, you know, objected, it's, it's right in the corner. How is, I pulled in there, and it's very, very tight to back out. In other words, you know, you've got the creek there, you've got that whole area, you know, behind there that you can't use because, especially at the end, which is at the north of, the bottom of the map, what direction is that? Okay, the southeast part there. It's very, it's, you know, it comes around, and it's very difficult to back out, especially if there's a car parked next to it. How do you, how, how could you mitigate that?
Well, you know, I, I know the zoning code demands the parking count per, per unit. Doesn't, the individuals that might be renting this, doesn't necessitate that they'll have two cars, you know, per unit? I mean, it may be one car. The occupant may not have a car at all, you know, and because of the economics, you know, circumstances. This, the apartment, it may be, become very appealing to such a person because, again, as I mentioned earlier, they have great pedestrian access to so many different shops and to 30, Route 32. So it's quite possible that several of the six parking spaces may not be occupied just because of the nature of the, of the rental. That would be the, you know, only way to mitigate it. You know, we could designate compact cars in the, the two parking spaces that are most southeast, you know, in the lot. That would, even though the parking space is 9 by 18, compact car is a lot smaller. That would definitely increase the 10.8 feet area designation and notation in that spot to something greater, you know, probably possibly 12, 13, 14 feet.
So where would the dumpster go? It has to be where I imagine a truck picks it up and dumps it.
Has to be able to front load it, pick it up and bring it out. Well, you know, the, the 10.8 feet is, is definitely wide enough. You know, it would be difficult for the truck to pull in, grab the dumpster or trash containers, and would have to pack out. So we would have to give that some more thought, you know, where a dumpster might be located. I don't have the answer right now, at all.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, don't disappoint me. Don't disappoint me.
Did we get new plans?
Yes, we, yes, we did. We got. He got rid of.
Is a dumpster enclosure required for this residential use?
An enclosure for the dumpster yet?
Yeah.
I don't know, is it? Yeah, I know.
Because it's such a minor.
Okay.
Because it's in the village, they have garbage pickup. So, you know, it could be regular trash cans out along the street.
Yeah, I just think that there's one there now, and on the, on the original plans, it was, I don't know. This. This is the new plan. This is the new one. See, the spaces are gone. Here's, it's C2.
Yeah, the new plan has a revision date of 2/22/23.
Yeah.
In the upper right corner.
Yep. No, the, right, that's, yeah. Anyone else from the board have any questions, concerns? No? Anything you'd like to add before I open it up to the public?
No, I think I've said everything. You know, again, we definitely believe this area is conducive and lends itself to apartments and residential use, and I think it's a natural fit. I hope the board sees, sees the same.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to open this to the public? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is anyone in the first row which just wishes to speak to this application? Third row? Fourth row? Last row? Anybody?
Motion to close the public hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we will deliberate, deliberate at the end, and you're welcome to stay, or you can call tomorrow morning. Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing for Yan, requesting variances for the construction of a single-family dwelling, whereas pursuant to Section 310-7, properties in the R1A district are required to have a minimum lot area of 43,560 square feet, a minimum lot width of 125 feet, a minimum front yard setback of 40 feet, a minimum side yard setback of 30 feet, and a minimum setback for both side yards of 60 feet. Said property is located in the R1A zoning district at 15 Schuet Place in Central Valley, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 228, Block 6, Lot 7. And I see the applicant is very ready. I wonder why. Okay, would you please state your name for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Evan Yan of 15 Schuet Place, Central Valley, New York, also the architect of record for this, my property. So, good evening to Madam Chair and board members. I could give you a quick overview of the project.
Sure.
So, last August of 2022, the house was destroyed by fire and demolished that day due to structural concerns from the Building Department. And luckily, though, because of great construction of the turn of the century, the foundation survived, two-foot-deep foundation walls. So just to brief everyone on the site, this is the survey from, prior to the, the fire, of course, as it was, the as-built survey from the previous owner. And you can see that it was a two-and-a-half-story dwelling that had a full front porch. It had actually an addition, I think it was at one point a wraparound porch that was closed off sometime in the 50s or 40s. And this building has a shared driveway that is very tight and narrow with a concrete drive and then a very tight side yard. So of course, because this site was created in like 1899, it predates any zoning and is a pre-existing, nonconforming site up until the fire. So what I look, what I'm looking to do is reconstruct, obviously, a similar two-story wood-framed, single-family house over the existing foundation. And because of the nature of the porch that was there on the east side of the property, those foundation piers actually collapsed. So the only thing remaining is the actual foundation wall, which is actually in, in great shape and provides a better side yard setback. So we're located in the R1A residential one-acre district and doing, proposing a similar as-of-right one-family dwelling. Of course, the bulk regulations are for R1A, 43,560, or one acre for minimum lot area. The pre-existing, nonconforming lot area is .2 acres or 8,819 square feet. The lot width minimum is a, required is 125 feet, but the lot width is actually 50 feet. Front yard minimum is 40-foot setback. Pre-existing, nonconforming setback is a 25.6-foot setback that I'm proposing, which is actually less than where it was. I don't need a big porch in the front. And the side yard setback is a 30-foot minimum. Actual side yard setbacks are 11.4 feet on one side and nine feet. Reduce this, the pre-existing one was four-and-a-half feet, and I've pushed it back to the foundation wall, so we picked up more of a side yard setback. Both sides, 60-foot total, and actual pre-existing, nonconforming would be a 20.25. Coverage is 20%. And the proposed would actually be 17.8%. And the building height maximum is 35 feet. And from average grade to the mid-ridge point of the gable roof would be 28.8 feet, and no change to, of course, the dwelling and parking. And lastly, I could show you some character. So the street was, you know, part of Smith, Smithcove Road and that entire, sorry, Smithcove and the entire development. So all the homes were built from various contractors with various styles of architecture over the, the years. And in the 1800s, 1900s, they built each one very similar in where there was place and that street wall, but very different characters. So this, my house, where the foundation sits, is obviously in line with creating that frontage and that character of that street. And I think that creating a house in the And I think that creating a house in the same place, using the same foundation wall, would have the least disturbance to the neighbors, to the site, to the environment, and also reinforce that character that's been already created on that kind of historic street. So I look forward. Any questions from the board?
You answered all of mine. Any questions from the board? No? No? The house that you plan will most likely fit in with the
Yes.
architecture of the neighborhood. And I know that the homes are very varied there.
Yeah, they're very.
The one that was there had that front wraparound, well, it wasn't wraparound there. It was a long front porch. The one next to you on the right, as you look at the front, is a totally different type of home. And across the street, you have, you know, different types of architecture.
Exactly. And there's a mixture of, like you said, of gable roofs, hip roofs and dormers and all these type of classic American styles. And what I'm proposing is something to match in there with a gable roof. And it's in the packet that I sent with the elevations. Of course, I would have loved to build a glass house, but I realized it would be quite out of character there. But. But yes, to answer your question, it would match the character and I think add to the history of that area.
Yeah, I think I know one of the reasons you bought there was because it was an old, established neighborhood.
Exactly. Yeah, the neighbors are great, of course. I couldn't ask for better neighbors during something like that. And I'd love to be back.
It's not every day that you get to quite literally design your own home.
Yep, exactly. Not the way I wanted to, but.
Silver lining.
Right. Wasn't in the plan originally.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it was definitely not in the plan.
I knew I was gonna get there, but I know how. And this is not how I thought.
So no questions from the board? Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Yan?
I know, looking forward to hearing your feedback at the end of the public hearing.
All righty. Do I have a motion to open it to the public? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Anyone in the first row which just speak to this application? Third row? Fourth row? Last row? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're welcome to stay or you can call tomorrow. You know the number. Oh, I forgot to enter this into the letter. I just wanted to enter to the record that one of the neighbors, Sandra and Adeo Matansi, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, are in favor of this application. They're asking us to support Mr. Yan and approve the variances he needs. Okay. Next on the agenda? What happened here it is? I know. That's why I put my little red clip on it. Next on the agenda is Valdez, continuation of public hearing for a special permit to permit a second dwelling unit for a family member, Priscilla Arias, pursuant to Section 310-35 of the Village Code. Said property is located in the R1A zoning district at 20 Abrams Road in Central Valley and is known on the tax maps as Section 226, Block 1, Lot 37.221. Is the applicant present? Could you please go to the podium and give us your name?
Ms. Valdez.
You've been waiting a long time for this. You first applied in, what, 2021? And then you had difficulty getting, you know, an architect of drawings and all that kind of stuff, right? And then we had the moratorium.
Yes.
So here you are, finally.
Here I am. I actually thought it was for the outbuilding, though, so there's a confusion.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask you.
Yes.
The original application states, accessory apartment to existing dwelling located in the lower level of a bi-level house is proposed. The original garage, which is attached, has been renovated to accommodate the space. Yet this week, we got a letter from an engineer that says that they are going to provide engineering consultation and design services in the matter of seeking a zoning variance for converting a detached garage into a small, one-bedroom apartment.
That's the one, yeah.
So, okay. So now we're back to square one because I don't have, I mean, I saw that the outbuilding, that's the one on the left, right? What the, it's called the outbuilding on the original plans.
It was used, yes.
Yeah. We would need floor plans for that outbuilding. We have now the floor plans for your house.
I provided, that was provided months ago.
Right, no, 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 I, no, we have that. We have that. But we don't have anything for the outbuilding. And to tell the truth, when I received this, it was the first I knew that the outbuilding was going to have anything to do with the application. Because the, like I said, the original one was for the downstairs for the mother-daughter, because it was a pre-existing, what they called an in-law apartment at the time.
But then that changed. And then I was told, you guys didn't approve my hardship. I sent letters and so forth. It was thrown back to the back burner. And so I moved forward. I proceeded with the conversion of the outbuilding because it was an existing space. So what now?
So are you saying that it has already been converted? Okay, but we have to treat this as if it was not, correct? So what we need, we need.
Are there variances required for an existing?
No, it's a special permit, but we still need the, you know, the dimensions and all that kind of stuff. Well, the building's 24 by 24 according to the, to the floor plan that we have. Not the floor plan, the. Yeah, right, the stuff that we have.
So you were saying we need the special permit conditions for a mother-daughter construct that would still.
Yeah. So what I wanted to do was move forward with this and just leave the other.
Leave the other one?
That's, yes.
Leave it the way it is?
Yeah, because it's an urgent situation. I've sent medical documentations. I don't know what else to send. I just want to move forward with this, please. Whatever I need to do.
So does all she need now is the floor plans?
Do we need a floor plan?
We do need the floor plan because it's limited in the size that it is permitted to be.
So that was sent. I can show you what was sent. That was sent with the application months ago. So I'm not sure.
For the, for the outbuilding?
Yes, there was a floor plan. There was an extra survey. And that's the architectural letter that was also sent. So I'm not sure where the confusion is, but I have copies of that.
Okay, I have in front of me the Marchhurst letter from Michael Ayel, which is where he said he was doing the consulting and design for the detached garage. I have the appraisal from, not the appraisal. What is it, the appraisal, is that what it's called? Yeah. For the house when you purchased it in 2016, which, which I thought was for the in-law apartment that was pre-existing in the house itself, the downstairs. But I didn't get anything else.
Can I?
You can, but the problem is that we won't have time to review it now. But. Let me see, maybe I did get something. I didn't get this. Did you get this? You did?
Not that, it's not that.
Oh, it's not that? Oh, sorry.
That's in the, yes, that we got. I don't, well, seeing this. I know. Yeah, we don't have time.
So I saw that because it's on the website.
Okay, I didn't, I don't, I'm a paper person. I write all over everything. Okay, what we need to do is we need to review this. So we're probably gonna have to carry this over to next month just to make sure, I know it's.
I've gotten used to it.
I'm so sorry. Anybody from the board have any other questions at this point? No? Do I have a motion to open it up to the public?
Motion.
Second? Rachel did. Okay, so you want to go to the podium and tell?
No, I just want to say, you know, she's being here in this for emergencies. She should do this for her family. I mean, I told her quite a few times. I mean, she's here, she's been here for three months. They're literally asking the guys. She owns the house lovely. She's doing this for family, for school. I would think that, you know, just when you look at it, it really has its say in it. So I would say not to delay it. You know, no longer for her perspective, for me. Consider that fact. She's really been here for.
This is the first time she's here?
So that's, I think, you know, we delayed it too long.
Yeah.
And as a matter of fact, she said, she said this all through the water back. I think she has to consider it now.
Yeah, but we don't have time to review it now.
It's just to look at it. Sure, you can review. And you know, it's a life-long, honest woman, you know? You know, we're sad. I mean, I have a nonprofit. How many times I've told you guys because I want to help the community? So in her part over here, for her to do this, it doesn't happen. And I think she should just.
What is your name?
My name is Sylvia Ross.
Sylvia Ross.
And that would be the mayor one day.
We need a change.
I don't even, I don't know if everybody has this.
I don't have a copy.
Yeah.
It's not on the website.
Yeah, I, I never got this. Did you?
I've written letters. I wrote a letter to the mayor. I've, I've, this is, this is not new. I got a response from Maria Rubio.
She, yeah, she's.
Exhausted now because my son is in the hospital as we speak, so I have to run back. But I provided medical documentations. I provided the necessity of my brother, who's in need of the additional dwelling unit. That would be considered even the mother-daughter as opposed to the other. I also work remotely and I've lost my space through the family urgency, particularly after the COVID. I've submitted hardship. I just don't know what else. I do have an acre. I've seen people build much more than that in a quarter of an acre. And that's where I'm just mind-boggled because it seems that there's been preferences for whatever other reasons. But I've been in the community since 1999, servicing the community. And now it's my turn. The foot is on the other end. You guys know, I have a disabled child. I have another disabled person. It'll be three disabled people in my house now. And so whatever you can do, I don't want to argue. I just want this, I want solution, basically, is what I'm asking for.
So did you, you said it earlier that you have, you moved, you moved forward because, you know, you were waiting for so long with the moratorium?
Absolutely, I was waiting. And then I started reading up on the additional dwelling units and doing research. To be honest with you, I couldn't afford an attorney, so I did the research myself. And that's why I moved forward because I've had a drastic income change. I stopped working in the hospital.
Is, is the garage already ready, you know, to move in?
Yeah, well, I, I only need one, well, I received a violation. And so that's why I stopped. But the inside is done. It's just that one piece to cover up.
What was the violation for? That you didn't have a permit or?
That I didn't have a permit. It was an existing outbuilding. They were using it for storage and stuff. So I figured work with what I have and postpone the other stuff because it would have been the fastest result based on the urgency.
No doubt about the one that's downstairs that was already there.
Yeah, my, my daughter, my granddaughter is occupying. I have literally eight people in the house, soon to be nine, because my brother will be coming with me soon. And he's given pretty much two years. So he's in palliative care. We don't know how long. And so that'll, so yeah, it's, it's, it's been a trying two years.
Is that downstairs where you said your daughter is, is that still?
Yes, she's still.
Is it part of your house or is it still being treated as a?
It's still, well, when I bought the house, apparently it was no longer mother-daughter. So it's considered a one-family house, five-bedroom and stuff. But now that would be, like I said, it was existing. I figured work with what I have for the urgency of it.
And can we keep what you just gave us or is that your?
You can keep it.
So at the end of this, if I can give that suggest so that that can be scanned and distributed to everybody and then uploaded onto the website?
And if you look at the first picture, it was horrendous. So it's actually beautiful now. It looks like a miniature little house. It's been really, it, it, it's not a nice, it's brought, makes the property look much nicer. It used to be, it looked abandoned when I first bought it and stuff. So it's actually added value to the area as well.
And I think a lot too of the material that you referenced that you did submit was actually to the board of trustees because I've sat that meeting and I've seen that information. So that was not submitted to this board. But that went to the request for relief from the moratorium. Now there's some additional exceptions, so that's why the applicant is back before you tonight. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background in case you thought you were missing more and were just looking for this. And I think the board will take a look at it and hopefully be able to move forward next month so that you're no longer in this holding pattern.
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
So this is really the only outstanding document that we use? Or anything else we need just to make sure that something like this? Honestly, I couldn't tell you right now because I actually didn't see it.
Yeah, of course. Oh.
No, it's over here. No, but I haven't looked at it. I don't want to say that that's it without taking the time that she deserves to have it reviewed so that the board has the accurate information and so you can move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this application? Do I make a motion to carry this over till next month? Or should, we can't make a decision this evening, can we? With the documentation that we have.
If either way, you would be deliberating and authorizing a decision?
The draft decision, right.
The draft decision, right. That would be all that you would be doing at this point? So you wouldn't be acting to it?
So make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Make a motion for counsel to provide a draft resolution for next meeting, consistent with the discussions the board now and afterwards.
Second.
Just take hand afterwards off.
Consistent with our discussion.
Wait, just a moment, just some information. Sorry, I just want to make sure. So that, sorry, I'm asking a question very publicly placed, which is very, always a lot of.
Just a draft, a regular draft decision.
Regular draft decision. So basically, so based on the documentation, will any kind of executive session or like there? I'm just trying to understand how this would happen. Just because I know my understanding.
So the draft decision will be provided.
Yeah.
And we would either vote to accept it or reject it at the next meeting, just like we did.
Just like we did for the two today.
Okay, gotcha.
If it's ready and we accept it, it goes forward. She gets her.
And you don't have to agree with what's in there right now?
Right.
Basically, you would be considering it, but it would be before you. So it wouldn't kick the applicant out for another month after that.
Okay.
This is actually the quickest way to be done. It's the way all the applications are done. I don't, were you here in the beginning when I read the decisions?
Yes.
They were decided the same way we planned to do yours last month. So now they have their variances or special permits or whatever.
Okay.
Okay? Do we need?
We need to vote on it.
I think, uh-
I second it.
I think it did, yeah.
And we need to vote on it.
Right. So, all in favor of having counsel draw up the-
Aye.
Okay. Mike?
Yes, aye.
Aye? Aye. So, it's unanimous there.
At the end of the meeting, but knowing that you have to go to the hospital, and then just-
Thank you. Thank you. I'm done, I'll be sitting, okay, thank you.
I'm very sorry. I'm very sorry.
Next on the agenda is a continuation of a public hearing for Ross, for a special permit to permit a second dwelling unit for a family member, Martina Espana, pursuant to Section 310-35 of the Village Code. Said property is located in the R1A zoning district at 6 Carroll Drive in Highland Mills, and is known on the tax maps as Section 202, Block 1, Lot 46. And the applicant is present, would you go to the podium, please, and state your name, even though you did before?
I am future Dr. Sylvia Ross. So, I am here because, basically, when I bought the house, it already had a kitchen on the bottom of the house, which was a functional, electrical. And I have my mother, she lives with me, and I bought the house with my sister as well, so we live all together. So, I thought that it was fantastic, the previous owner, they have the second, they have the same thing, mother and daughter stuff. So, she told me just to submit it because of my mom, she's seventy-eight years old, and she cannot even walk, go upstairs, to where, you know, she usually goes, so she stays downstairs. So, I thought it would be actually good to have her, you know, there cooking, because she doesn't wanna go upstairs cooking, you know, it's harder for her. So, and sometimes she doesn't cook, you know, like, we take her out, or anything like that. So, it is electrical, so by all means, it's no, not, no gas, nothing like that. So, I thought it was actually functional, and tense given, because, you know, oil, unfortunately, the house has oil. So, it costs a lot of money for, to do, like, turkey, you know, so I do it there, myself, you know, I bake there. I think it's easier that way. I thought that, you know, obviously, the house really, it, it looks like a two, two-family house, you know? It doesn't have anything on the floor, it has all windows and everything, it's literally an open two-house. Or, if I had to pay a little bit taxes on that, I don't mind, you know, as well, because it looks like a two-house, you know, built up. The, the previous owner, they have set it up like that already, which was for me a plus, because I have family with me. And so, that's basically what I'm here for.
I guess it was in April 2021, when you first applied, and I think that was the meeting you went to the wrong place.
Yeah, I got lost.
You went to Town Hall or something, I don't know. And then in May, I think you, you didn't come to that meeting either. And then in June, we had the virtual meeting, but you hadn't sent the, the floor plans. And then the floor plans that we got were of, it was just a dimension of each room. And what we were looking for was the whole dimension. You know, the whole house. In other words, you know, it's fifty feet long, it's thirty-five feet wide, it's, you know?
No, they have everything, so the front, the, the back, the, the, the main on the top, and on the bottom. But mostly, what you need is the bottom one, because that's where the dwelling, the-
Well, we need to know the top two, because the, for a mother-daughter, it can't be twenty-five percent more, it can't be more than twenty-five percent of the square footage of the house, or more than a thousand square feet.
I don't know, so, the space that I provided at you, so, you have that.
The only thing we have.
And I believe they was already done before, so, there was no auction, no, it was already done. I mean, previously, with the previous owner, they had that.
I, I know the previous owner, the, the house has always had a, some kind of, you know, I don't wanna, you know, speak on behalf of the-
Oh, no, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, but it wasn't, there was no permit.
Yeah, no, I know, you know, I understand.
So, there's no documentation for that.
Oh, she says she had it, she said that she had a permit.
She had a permit, she said?
Yeah, and then so-
Well, they don't have any record of it in the building department.
Oh, I don't know. So, I mean, that's what, that's what I was informed, and that's why also I applied, because I said, okay, I have my mother there, so might as well keep it as it is. So, just-
Go ahead, Greg.
Does, let's turn this on. Does the, does it have a separate entrance?
Yes, it has a separate entrance, um, yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a, yeah, even have windows, I mean, everything, it looks like a, like I said, it looks like a two-family. Like, literally, you know, so, and then we just closed it, and it looks, you know, separate doors, locked, everything like that, they enter, she enters from that side, she lays from that side, which is actually better for her, because she doesn't have to go up the escalators, you know? When you're getting older, and she unfortunately doesn't exercise enough, so, muscle lost. I mean, I try.
So, I think the, the situation probably hasn't been clearly explained. What we need to do to be able to do a special permit for a mother-daughter. We need to see a floor plan of the entire house, okay?
No, but you have it.
No, we don't, we only have this, right, we have this of lower floor. We don't have the whole floor plan of the house, showing the dimensions of the entire first floor, second floor, because a mother-daughter technically can only be, the mother part of a mother-daughter cannot be more than twenty-five percent of the total floor area.
But if you, actually, it's a square footage, you just add it up to it, it's not, it's the same, it's just, the house, it has the same squares. So, it's the same thing if you could put it up or down, so it's the same, you just add it. So, basically, you just have it there.
Oh, it is?
It's there. So, you just add it up, and then-
Is it more than twenty-five percent?
Yeah, that's, yeah. But it's pre-existing, so what do we-
Terminated, it's a separate property, so it's no longer a system.
Right, there's no-
No, 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 what I'm meaning is, there's no construction going-
Basically, she's on downstairs, the whole entire downstairs.
Yeah, no, I get it, yeah.
I mean, the garage takes up-
So, we can't, by law, by code, you can't-
Really, the one making a true mother-daughter house, it would just, I don't know, go like that, basically, and even then, that would be seventy-five, twenty-five percent.
Right.
And it's a fairly large kitchen. Is this the, what, do you need to, does this-
Where is this?
Yeah, the problem, I think, that we're having right at this moment, is that the lower level is almost exactly the same size as the upper level. Is that correct?
Well, because-
Almost, I mean, it's-
Almost, because, you know, it's the garage.
Yeah, yeah.
You have a garage, and you have a laundry there.
Right.
And then you have the whole entire half, this just basically her style.
Right, and that-
So, everything.
Includes the, the kitchen?
Which is not even a kitchen, it's-
Does your sister stay down there also?
Yeah, so she stayed down there, that's why they cover all. And my sister practically owns the house too, so, you know, basically, she's in a mortgage. So, that's how we bought the house.
But, her sister, because she's using part of that downstairs?
It's still the accessory apartment? That's how they're treating it, except-
Okay.
From a perspective, it was already done that way. I mean, when I came in, she said there was no problems whatsoever, because they've been, they had it already. And then they were like that, that's how I bought it, because I thought it was great, you know, two kitchens. I mean, I literally paid the lady for the kitchen that it was there, that she used. And so, and I found that that was very good, because it's electrical, nothing, no, no, really no other connections, it's just disconnected, you know? So, it's easier for cooking, you know, certain things. So, there is no, I would, I would assume it's no problems whatsoever, on that sense. And it's mostly for my elder mom, and my sister when they cook, you know?
Do you have a question? Rachel, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a question, in terms of, I'm looking at the square footage of, of the basement, is the patio included? It's, it's an exterior space, is that qualified as part of, like, the actual?
I don't, no, I don't think so, I don't think so.
It's interior.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, I, I just wanna make sure, I'm just-
The, the measurements that we have now would not allow you to have the mother-daughter. However, counsel will try to find a way.
I don't know, but I will look and see, um-
I don't know, you know, you buy a house, and has all that, and then you think, and then they tell you something, because that's what you expect when you buy something. It's already there, and then she mentioned a how already a permit, so-
Did you go through a Realtor?
Yeah, through a Realtor.
Should've told you.
And everything, and, and then she said to me, no, she, they really saw me, I mean, the Realtor got more money, I paid her too, I mean, like, seriously. She saw me the house, I loved it, because it's very spacious. And as a matter of fact, the reason why I bought this house, is because I have a nonprofit, where I wanted to, on the front, I wanna build something, so I can help the community to actually grow their own vegetables and stuff. That's something that I will probably plan with you guys later, because I will probably need a special staff, but it's for the community. Or, if we can do that in somewhere where we can all do it, because I'm a naturopathic doctor, with actually all these things that I wanna help a lot of people. And for me, I even bought properties in another countries to do that and help, because this is my, this is who I am. And by all means, I can sell the house, you know, I can buy a two-bedroom, this isn't, you know, but I bought it with that thinking, I said, my mother's here, and might as well. So, with your consideration, I really appreciate that you guys will consider that, because it's really not my fault. I just bought it, and I was based by what other people told me. And, and again, by all means, I, if you want any questions, I'm here to answer them.
I don't have any other questions, other than the ones I already asked. Anybody else have questions from the board? Want to open it up to the public?
Motion to open the public hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this application? For the people who are left? Everybody walked out. All right, do I have a motion to carry this over to next month, so we can look at, see if there are any solutions to what this problem seems to be?
Conundrum?
Yes, this conundrum.
Okay, it sounds good, I, I don't mind, but, you know, thank you.
Who made the motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we'll continue this next month.
Okay.
And see what happens.
Which day will be?
It'll be April 12th.
Oh, April 12th, okay.
It's also Wednesday.
That's it, no building inspector's report, no nothing. So, we need to move on to the deliberations, correct? Okay. Let me get this together here first. Let's carry on. This was closed. This was closed. No, this was all-
Yeah.
Okay, I can't remember, I didn't write it down. And Simka too.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I have, Yan.
Yan.
Sim, Simka and-
First to have it.
Right, yeah, okay. Yeah. All righty. He's here too, yeah. Okay. So, we have three closed public hearings, and since you're here, Mr. Yan? You're first. Okay, so, really what you wanna do is you want your house burned down, what's left is a very sturdy, constructed foundation, and you wish to build upon that foundation. In fact, you're going to lessen the footprint on one, one side or both, I figured that you said?
Each side.
Each, in each side, so it's less of a non-conformity, not more. But you still need variances for those, for those, uh, side yard, front yard, you know, all that. Yep, okay, so, making my glasses. Do we have to go through the five questions for each?
You can do them all at once, so-
Yeah, okay, right, okay, because I don't-
Yes, you can, if you want.
No, 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 I didn't. Okay. So, there are five questions, as you are well aware. And what we're talking about here, board, is we're looking at the, the lot size, the width, the front yard setback, and the side yard setbacks. He meets the coverage and the height requirement, so we don't need, he doesn't need any variances for that. So, keeping that in mind, the first question is, will the granting of this variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or create a detriment to nearby properties? The applicant says, "All homes and lots within Schuett Place are similar, pre-existing, non-conforming lots of similar area, yard setback, and building styles. The proposed home will be encroached slightly less into the pre-existing front-side yards, and fit within the character of the neighborhood."
Agree.
I agree. Anybody have a disagreement? Okay, question number two, "Can the benefit you seek be achieved by some other feasible method other than the variance? Utilizing the current zoning," and the applicant says, "Utilizing the current zoning schedule of zoning district regulations, the home would not fit in a meaningful way on the pre-existing non-conforming lot. The current zoning regulations require a side yard, which is greater than the existing lot's width. In addition, the front yard would put the home into a steep hill, which would require additional excavation and fill." Yeah, the backyard goes down quite a bit. I agree, I mean, what's it gonna do with this foundation?
I, I agree.
"How substantial is the variance that you are requesting? The variance should not be substantial, as the lot home was pre-existing, non-conforming conditions and matched the neighborhood's characteristics." Well, numerically, it's probably substantial, but that doesn't preclude an approval if, if we get to that point. Anybody have anything to say on that? No? Okay. Number four, "Will the granting of the variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? Applicant says, "If the ZBA granted the continuation of the pre-existing, non-conforming use, there would be less environmental modifications, and the home would be more contextual into the historic neighborhood." Right now, I think the burned-out foundation is more of an impact than a new, new building that will be there. Anybody have anything to say on that?
No, I think we'd rather have a house.
Yeah, I think so. And question number five, "Is the alleged difficulty self-created? This is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot that was subdivided and finished prior to zoning or building code in 1912. Without a variance, the lot would not meet any of the current regulations." And of course, unless you burn your own house down, which I doubt. I agree, that it's not self-created.
No.
No.
Not, agreed.
Do you disagree, Greg?
No, no.
Oh, okay, because I was gonna, yeah, okay, okay.
I'm sure you didn't set the fire. That's for- That's for sure.
Yes, right. So do I have a motion to have council draw up a draft decision consistent with what we just discussed?
Didn't, you just made it.
Okay, who would like to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So next month, we vote, and then you can start building.
Well, then he goes to the-
No.
Oh, right, 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 right. You know, and there's, there's no conflict of interest with the planning board though, right?
Not he'll, he'll-
He'll have to recuse himself from that application.
Really sorry that your house is destroyed, that's, that's really sad. I didn't know it was your house, I had heard about that at the house, I knew you lived there, but I didn't know which house. I saw, it looks really nice. Oh, I'll bet.
I'm sure. Yeah, good luck.
Okay. Yeah, was there, I didn't have to do anything for that application.
That was easy.
Okay, this is here.
Oh, this one's gonna be fun.
You want to do Fifty Smith Clove or Yan?
We just did Yan.
I mean, I'm sorry, or Simka.
Pick one, doesn't matter.
Alright, Simka's on my table here.
There you go.
Okay. So this is the corner property, First Avenue and Scunamun. They plan to use the foundation and build up from that.
That makes it very similar to Epple's situation.
Yeah.
Right.
By, okay, let's go through the questions and then I'll- Same five questions, "Will the granting of this variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or create a detriment to nearby properties? The applicant says, 'No, the whole area will benefit from rebuilding this.'" Having seen this building, I tend to agree.
I, I concur.
Was that not a nice way to say it?
That was very well said.
Okay, so we agree that it will not produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood, okay. "Can the benefit you seek be achieved by some other feasible method other than the variance?" And the applicant says, "No, all non-conforming, all non-conformings are existing." Which is true, however, I, I do have a bit of a problem with that, what was it, that new addition on the back? It creates more of a non-compliance. You know, in other words, it's a twelve-and-a-half feet closer to the property line. With that new addition, it's, it was like a utility, not utility, what's the word? What was that?
I think it's a mechanical-
Yeah, a mechanical room, like, I guess for all the stuff to run the house. Does anybody else have a problem with that?
Given the lot size, no, I don't.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay, so, we're not happy, but we agree. Okay, I'm not happy, but we agree.
Well-
No, it's, I just, I just wanted to bring that up, basically play devil's advocate.
In a perfect world-
Yeah.
But it's not a perfect world.
Right, exactly.
And, and it is pre-existing non-conforming, and all they're trying to do is make the most out of it, and I would- Having seen some of those properties, I would bet that others have the same kind of condition.
I'll bet, yeah.
So, I, it's-
And I've seen the houses that have been, I've seen the houses that he's done that, and they're, they're beautiful.
And what's behind here anyway?
Uh, it's, I think it's, it looked like a-
I'm trying to remember, I don't, but-
I don't remember either.
There were no comments from neighbors, other than-
That's true, other than, right, in favor of-
Please do it, so that kind of weighed on my comment.
Okay, question number three, "How substantial is the variance that you're requesting? Applicant says, 'The existing is an old, non-conforming use seasonal dwelling, and the owner wants to convert it to year-round. And the planning board referred to the ZBA for the area and setback requirements.'" Well, sure, the, the variance numbers are substantial, but given what's there, and it's the same foundation, it's just going up. It's just the numbers on the setbacks which are already non-conforming.
Correct.
And existing. Anybody have anything different on that? No? Number four, "Will the granting of the variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? Applicant says, 'No. From an old seasonal dwelling, it will be converted to a dwelling conforming to all New York State building codes.'" Yeah, except for the setbacks.
It will be a-
It'll be an improvement.
Physical and environmentally, it's going to be an improvement.
Yes, yes, I agree. And, "Is the alleged difficulty self-created? Applicant says, 'No, all non-conforming are existing.'"
It's self-created because he could-
Well, you know, in the sense that they want a new building, but that's about it.
Right, so, I, I'm-
You know, I mean, that doesn't preclude us from- So shall, everyone else okay with that? So shall we have council draw up a draft decision? Based on our discussion this evening? Do I have a second?
Second.
Michael, okay.
Congratulations on your first motion.
And Fifty Smith Clove. Okay, so Fifty Smith Clove, this is where they want to put the second apartment in the laundromat, laundromat building. And they have parking on the side of the one-family house. And they plan no changes, except aesthetics maybe on the outside, and just plan to do things on the inside. I'm, I'm just concerned about that very tight, very, very tight parking, because I had to, there was only two cars in the lot. I parked next to one and I backed up, and then I was already at the back, so I had to, you know, go forward this way a little, and then back up again, and then go forward this way to like the-
You don't have to say car.
No, and if there was a car on the other side of me, I don't know that I could have done that.
You mean, I'd have a problem with a truck?
I think you would. If it's long.
It's long.
You know, the, you know, I, because I, you know, I, the projects, you know, they made a great presentation and all, but I mean, like, you know, I think when they were referring to extra parking nearby, I think they were referring to the other side of the trestle, and I can't imagine anybody really-
Yeah, like you go grocery shopping, and you, and you have like packages and-
And also, just like at night by yourself, that, that area is not particularly bullet, there, you know, I, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't be happy about it, but then again, like, you know, it's the circumstances that exist, and I mean, it's just, that's what we're here to sort of discuss, I was just sort of-
So, but, you know, the, the application is for a second apartment.
Yeah.
This is just a side effect of the, having a second apartment.
Yeah.
So, we have to decide if it's bad enough, that, if we think it's bad enough that they shouldn't have a second apartment, or- The compact car thing, I've seen that at Woodbury Heights. They have parking only for compact cars, because I guess it's, you know, in one, one section, yeah? Yeah?
Compact only.
Compact cars only, because it's smaller area. So, I mean, would people follow that? I don't know. Because it's tight at that, that end of the-
Yeah, it's tight.
And I, when I looked and saw how small ten-point-eight feet is around that curve, I'm glad we didn't, we removed those parking spaces because-
So, when that was a laundromat, because I, I was here, I mean, when was that most recently, like an operating?
Oh, I used to do my laundry there, but I've been here forty-something years.
Four years, four, four years ago roughly, all around, off the scene.
But they didn't have parking on the side then, they only had it in the back, where it was all muddy and it was, you know, you did your laundry, and if you dropped something on the way out-
You had to go back in.
But just like my thinking is that, I mean, I-
And that wasn't their property.
But we parked there anyway.
Well, that was the only place to park.
Yeah, at that time.
At that time, and since that was an open, unused area, whoever did own that property, well, actually, we know now who owns that property today, but then, the owners probably didn't care or let them use it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what was my question, like, when this was an operating business, they would probably have as many as ten people in there at a time with cars and, I mean, maybe not, I mean, and never the opportunity to use it, it wasn't particularly big.
It was a small laundromat, yeah.
But, you know, it still was an operating business, that like, that people will, people will be in it at any given time, so, you know, that makes sense, more, more context to where people parked then.
Yeah, no, but the other thing is that what was never known, really, is that the two buildings are both owned by the same individual.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The existing house slash apartment, sort of looking at it from the street, the right side-
The single-family home?
That building and the laundromat, they're owned by the same and they're connected, which is why now the parking is proposed-
Yeah.
In that space. So.
Yeah, I was just- No, no, they could provide more context in terms of, you know, like, it obviously at one point worked enough to have whole control factor, but now it doesn't now, you know, thankfully, it doesn't where people would park when it was an operating laundromat.
So Kelly, does this then go to the planning board or not?
Yes, it does, it does.
Okay, so, my comment about the parking would basically be that I'm okay with the variance on the two spaces, and-
You mean the compact car part?
I'm, no.
The variance on the two spaces, oh, you mean the, the ones that are-
We have to give them a variance. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly, we have to give them a variance for two spaces, because they're proposing six where eight are required.
No, they only need six, right?
You know, it's that they, they need lot area, that one of the parking stalls is in the front yard.
Right.
The driveway is-
Only ten-point-eight, right.
So the lot area-
Well, that's pre-
So, so they're saying, so this is wrong, the variances that they have on this document-
No, they, they corrected it on their-
They corrected it on the second one.
Yes, yes, it's only six, they, because we were, we thought there were more apartments, because it was unclear, and they had it, yeah.
It was three, it was two, and then emails, um, and then the board, and tell them what they're-
Here, look at this one, this is-
I've got him, twenty-four, and it's either confirmed or not.
It annoys me that-
Here's the new one.
Okay.
See, it's only-
Sorry.
Six that they need. So there's no variance for two parking spaces. There's just that one parking space that encroaches in the-
That encroaches in the front yard.
Setback, right.
And that's, I'm gonna call that an existing, a pre-existing condition, even though it may not be technically, it's-
Under the code, it's not.
It is under the code, we would have to consider it such, but that's been that way ad nauseam, literally, forever, okay. Ten feet wide per lane, right, they only have a ten-foot eight max, well, at the back, right?
Yeah, but the front is not all that, they, the dumpster, well, now they have the dumpster right here.
So it's supposed to be ten feet wide per lane, and it's supposed to be a lane in and a lane out, so it's supposed to be twenty feet wide.
Per lane. And a lane out, right. Correct.
And I think the very back is ten-point-eight feet, and it looks like they provide a measurement for how wide it is at the front, it appears to be a little wider.
A little wider, yeah. Would have to be where a, um, truck would have to be able to get in there, they'd have to put the dumpster where the truck could, if they'd had a dumpster.
Right, that's the other question.
Yeah.
Is, do they even need a dumpster?
I don't know. So, they still would have garbage cans.
Resident, it's not technically private? Yeah, I'm betting they wouldn't, so.
They typically have one at the end, and then have a front loader, so they can drive it.
At the end, you mean here?
Yeah.
Oh, no, right now, there's nothing there now, it's right up here, right in the corner, it's angled, right by the street.
One, two, three.
But it would, you know, somebody backing out.
So the reality is, they might not need a quote-unquote dumpster, they might be able to use the existing single-family bins that we have and provide one per unit.
And where would they put these?
Well, so-
It would probably be referred to the traffic consultant to consider that, yeah.
Right, I mean, ultimately, to me, that becomes a planning board opportunity.
I mean-
I think there's enough space there to do that.
To have single, you know, garbage can, the-
Even if they did a small dumpster, I don't know how big the one is.
So where are these people going to keep their stuff, you know, their garbage cans and recycling bins?
In the back, and then bring them around to the front.
I guess, yeah.
That would be one way to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, I would want to keep them in the back, because who wants to seal those?
Or they keep them on the side, I mean, like, you know, people, just, they could, they give a little shed, and people could do any of those things.
Yeah, yeah.
So as far as the parking- The minimum lot area is kind of, it's-
There's nothing they could do about it, yeah.
That's sort of, to me, that's okay, fine. Parking stall within the front yard setback, I'm okay with that, because it's been there, and they've been doing that literally since-
Well, right now, it's just like a gravelly kind of, there's, it looks like they tried to pave it at one time, it's partly here, you know?
There have been points in time where there have been more than six cars parked there, so I'm saying the condition has been there, and I'm okay with that being within the front yard setback and granting that variance, my opinion.
I- Like, okay, like, you know, in terms of, like, legally speaking, if government, there's some kind of fire or anything like that, or an emergency vehicle needs to get through, is there enough room to have the six parking spaces? And to have room for any kind of personnel to be able to move their vehicles through?
So the planning board would deal with that and have the first responders, all of them from the village-
Yeah.
Have to weigh in on it, yeah.
Before they issue a building permit.
Gotcha, okay, so if we, so if we, in theory, approve-
They do ambulance, fire, and police.
Gotcha, okay.
So they consider that for any building, and I'm sure they would do it here, especially in this context.
Okay.
So what we're talking about is that setback.
Yeah.
That, whatever it is, three feet, I'm okay with that. Now, the ten-foot-wide driveways-
It's more narrow than I envisioned, but-
Well, it's literally, it's supposed to have two ten-foot wides, and you've got a maximum of ten foot in the back, you can't have two lanes, period, in a store.
No, no. And there's, I mean, creek is right there. I don't know. What's the scale on this? One inch is ten feet. So... About twenty feet of the, of the street.
Not even. It's probably about sixteen feet at the top.